So we're going to call the meeting to order. We're 15 minutes behind, just throwing that out there.
We're going to start with policy discussion overview of GTH quarantine determination guidelines for schools.
Yes, so. Bullet number, the first bullet and the second bullet really have to do with the quarantine learning model and some guidelines that East Shore Health has instituted relative to quarantine. So just so everybody has a foundational understanding, a student or staff member who's been identified as being a close contact to somebody who is COVID-19 positive needs to quarantine for 10 days. That's generally 14 days, but in the school setting, they have reduced it to 14 days.
10 days.
What?
10 days.
I'm sorry, 10 days, my bad. And if an individual is vaccinated and they do not have symptoms, they do not need to quarantine. If an individual is not vaccinated, they need to quarantine regardless of whether they have symptoms or not. And that is the basis for which students and staff get placed into quarantine after someone reports a positive case of a student or staff member in our school district. So when we have to send individuals home for 10-day quarantine, that could result in five to eight days of missing school if there are no days off or professional development days in that range. It could also be less. At the high school level, it's anywhere between two and five classes because we're on an A-Day, B-Day block every other day. So I just want to set sort of the foundation for the next part of the conversation, which I'm going to ask Jennifer Murray to assist in giving us an overview of our quarantine learning model. And Jen, while you're talking, I'm going to hand out our Success at Home Life coaching draft document.
Do you want me to hold on to the policy drafts?
I'll hand it over. You have this and then we'll do reference it after. So what Erica's handing out now is a document that outlines all of the live sessions that students will have access to. Our model involves regularly scheduled live interactive sessions in all grade levels. Thank you. And coaching on content from certified educators. We also offer some supplemental options and ways for students to get personalized support. Because we realize that in a quarantine situation, students, the nature of working from home is different than what is required by students in classrooms. And we had some review of our experiences last year, so we wanted to make sure that students had continuous learning and that they wouldn't fall behind. And so we worked really hard to make sure that our process was appropriate, kept kids on track academically, it kept them connected socially and emotionally, and we wanted to support a seamless transition back into the school setting. So to that end, we want to make sure teachers have both clarity on assignments that they need to do, but also supplemental video lessons or asynchronous courseware that would supplement any missed instruction that the student could not access as a result of their quarantine. This is more appropriate because it provides multiple ways for students to demonstrate their learning and doesn't impact negatively the in-person learners. So we wanted to make sure that the in-person learners had the bandwidth to do the work that they do and that our teachers had the ability to assess student work and provide individualized support through quarantine. So Erica has passed out live sessions. So a typical day might include a student in quarantine might be able to get some morning check-in. They might be able to look in their Google Classroom to see the lessons that they're on. All of our curricular resources in K-8 for math have video lessons that are corresponding with the topics that they're learning each day. And so those can be assigned. And then our students have some opportunity to log in and receive some support as they do the independent work relative to those lessons. There's two opportunities during the day for students to receive that individualized support for ELA and math. And then we also have opportunities for social emotional learning check-ins, maybe more activities that are related to connecting. How are you doing at home? And this is, this is just a draft. The TBDs, we're just waiting for those individuals to add their appropriate links and preferred times. So, you know, this is subject to change. Anything that is there with a name and a link is, is, is what it is. It's not draft, so those sessions will be available. The TBDs might, the time might change and the day might change. We're just waiting for the individuals who are doing those to let us know definitively the time block, the days, and then to add their links.
Yeah, will this be, for instance, just the Monday 8 to 8:30, Miss Del Judas? It says K-1 and 2. Is this specifically for all K-1, 2, or is this specifically to one school?
All K-1 students across the district.
Okay.
And again, this is a starting point. If we find we need to separate it out, K-1, 2, 3, we can do that. If we find students aren't showing up and we can combine it, K-3, we can do that. And as it grows or the need necessitates, we can continue to add as individuals say, hey, I'd really like to offer a music or an art or a PE session. I think people are just sort of settling into their schedules, trying to fill up, figure out what their loads are. And once they get themselves established, we might find more, like just two more people came forward today. That's why you see some TBDs in there. So we want you to realize that while this is a baseline, it's also flexible and it could grow in different ways. I met with the Success at Home coaches and I asked them very intently, as you go through this and you're experiencing these sessions with students, we want to hear from you, we want your feedback on what can make the experience better for students. Is it more time? Is it, you know, separating it out by grade level? Is it maybe not doing math and ELA together, but separating the content? I want you to provide us with information based on how you see students and families responding and attending these.
I have a question. So, and you may have said it and I missed it, I don't know. So when you're looking at this on Monday, so when you go to that 10 to 10:30 period and Mrs. Hurley, so Mrs. Hurley is free at that time to do this? Is that the idea?
It's her prep period during that time. And she's compensated in accordance with the teacher's contract.
Okay, all right, I got you, I got you.
Yep. So it's not taking away from Mrs. Hurley in front of her kids in class.
Right, that's what I wanted, yeah.
So we're trying to create this nice balance. And of course, you know, I do anticipate that some teachers who maybe have, due to a, you know, a grade level football issue or something, maybe a teacher's going to have five kids in quarantine in her classroom. A teacher might reach out and say, hey, listen, can I do this, a session every day with those five kids in my classroom? Absolutely. Those are the types of flexibilities that we're talking about.
Sounds good. I mean, at least it gives some live instruction, someone to look at, someone to talk to, ask questions.
And a touch point.
A touch point, and then obviously they're going to refer them if they need further, you know.
Yeah.
And let's hope that the quarantine, as you said, is, it's not going to be like a forever situation, you know? It's not three months, it's not.
It's fluid, so you might have a group of kids on Tuesday and then come Thursday, that group of kids could be different, depend on who returns to school and who gets put into quarantine.
And this, and approximately, like what's the, what's our quarantine rate right now? About how many, like for like 4th grade, say?
Like currently, if you look at the tracker, we have, the district has put seven individuals in quarantine.
So it's not like we have 20 kids and it's, you know, so it's, it's not going to be like an inundated thing where it's, you know, very large numbers.
And this is voluntary too, because we heard from families that, listen, it's really hard for me if my kid's in quarantine. I'm working, I have someone coming to the house to care for my child and they just don't have the capacity to do this. They'll help my kid with the work and sit with them, but logging on and finding the links. We understand the diverse needs and circumstances of our families, so we didn't want to make these sessions mandatory in order to earn attendance. You can get credit for the day by participating in this or completing your assignments in Google Classroom, or maybe if you're at the lower levels, doing some of your print materials, like your foundations, handwriting worksheet, and also participating in completing work in your individualized personalized software system. So the state has this chart where if a kid is in attendance for half of the school day, in any one combination of the things I just mentioned, live instruction, Google Classroom, personalized software, that they can earn credit for the day and be marked present. And we have special codes for that. And so upon the return, we'll evaluate how the kid did in quarantine and make determinations whether they were marked present or absent. You know, if the kid leaves and doesn't do anything for the 10 days, then they didn't really participate in first aid guidelines. We can't really give them credit for the day. But again, we do take the unique needs of every family into consideration. And if someone came to us and shared something, then we mark that absence excused.
Now, if you know the students are, you know, out in quarantine or something like that, you don't see any homework being submitted or anything like that, is there any way that's, would contact the kids to basically make sure that they're okay and?
Yeah, so we have a system for sharing information for kids who are in quarantine across the district. And the Success at Home coaches will have access to that list. So, you know, if, if a teacher's like, hey, listen, so-and-so hasn't turned anything in my classroom, if they don't show up to the live session, would you mind just reaching out? Absolutely. Or a teacher might just say, hey, are you doing all right? I posted a couple of assignments in the Google Classroom and I noticed that you haven't logged in. Is there something I can help you with? So we can absolutely make those, those touch points in addition to this type.
And that's something that exists currently when a student is out with the flu. Our teachers are generally communicative regarding, you know, while you're out. They keep folders and materials and they, you know, send emails and updates just in general on a regular basis. So that's not something that's unfamiliar.
And generally, teachers are really interested in having their kids stay connected and complete the work because it makes for an easier transition when they come back into the classroom, you know? So that they're not having to sit with them individually to catch them up on things. So teachers strategically create activities and tasks and post work there so that they can stay on track and make a smooth transition back. And that's what we want for our kids in quarantine.
Questions? Anybody else have any questions regarding that?
So that's the model. What we also handed you was, at the last meeting, there was a quarantine policy that was brought to the board. Jen and I took the liberty today of revising that in alignment with what we just presented you. So this is an updated policy relative to quarantine that sort of mimics and mirrors what we just presented to you so that the policy actually matches what we're seeking to execute.
Questions? Okay, we're going to move on to policy revision for COVID policy CBD 19-3 masks and face coverings.
Yes, so this was the one policy from the last meeting that you guys asked me to change. There was one little section. Let me pull it up. God, I can't see anything with this mask. It was, oops, I pulled it out, I pulled it out of my binder. It was a clause. It was a clause that Michelle asked me to strike.
I remember.
Remember? I ripped it out of, I ripped the policy out of my binder to share it with Melissa to make the revision. Let me go back to the previous, it was a few words. She's like, we shouldn't have that in there if that's not what we're going to follow, if you recall.
It was on school grounds.
Thank you. That's a great memory. Yes, on school grounds, meaning outside.
I knew I wasn't going to get that.
That, that's impressive. That's very impressive.
It's been a long week too.
And it's only Tuesday?
Yes.
So that, we did take that out. And so this 19.3 is reflective of removing that phrase.
I got a question on, I'm, I'm really tired of reading East Haven parent voices and saying these kids are not getting mask breaks. That kids have passed out, three kids in one school on one day. Who's monitoring this? There's a whole big thing about at the high school, period two is not giving them their breaks and then they go to period three and they're asking him and they're saying, no, that was period two.
I would, I would recommend that we maybe have you sit down with admin and just get something more structured and more concrete. I think what's happening is maybe they're, the teachers are maybe getting, getting in their, they're, you know, getting in the swing of things and then they're saying, okay, well, there'll be time in the next period and then the next period gets into the same. And I think it's just a snowball effect for each of the classes and it's getting missed. But I think it's just, it's become an habit.
Yeah.
And I think it's more so just in the grade levels that switch classes.
I also think we should take it all with a grain of salt. What one person says doesn't?
I've actually had several parents that are not grain of salt type of parents.
So I appreciate you bringing this up.
And I've asked them to contact you and that's the direction that I've, I've given them to contact you and the admin.
Give the, give the building principal a chance first to rectify it before coming to the superintendent.
I was, to Michelle, and I was, is there like a way we could give them like two passes throughout the day, like in the morning when they get there and they like hold them for the day so that they can give it to the teacher if they didn't have it at the grade? So like something that?
Part of the issue is that if you have kids in your class, you all have to go out because you can't leave half with the pass and leave half in for supervision reasons. That's why Vinnie said at some point during block two, every kid, take your kids out for a mask break and then block three. And I've seen that multiple times in writing to staff members and being reiterated. And I know Vinnie has followed up with, I've gotten two parent emails and we followed up with both those parents. And I've also followed up with the middle school principal who just recommunicated that she was going to meet with one of her teams to make sure they were giving mask breaks. And so we would ask that parents reach out to the school principal, give them a chance to rectify it. And if it's not, then come to me and I could work with the building administrator to make sure that it's absolutely happening.
Here's the other thing, I can just speak from my personal perspective. There are times, I, you can have a mask break inside. I mean, you want them to go out as much as possible, but like if there's, there are kids that will say, I don't want to go out and I'm alone. So you can't force everybody out at the same time. But you do your best to make sure they have them. But many times my students say, can I just go out to the hall for a minute? And we space them very carefully, we take turns and then we let them take their masks off in three minutes.
Is there like a designated area you could do? Like if they have to go to the bathroom, they get up and they leave the classroom. Like is there a place that you could designate for a mask break that separates them?
I could, and we can cover it like a duty. I certainly could.
Like they're going to the bathroom and they go get a mask break.
As long as, you know, they're not asking to go get a mask break five times during the actual period. But we could, might be able to designate it as a duty. Mr. D'Nazzo, I know he also said if kids are approaching teachers and they're asking for mask breaks, let them go to the window away from everybody, pull their mask down, take a break, go out into the hallway. Or sometimes there's labs connected to our science classrooms and they'll say, anybody who needs a mask break, you can go into the lab and take a spaced-out mask break. So you're right, it doesn't always have to be outside. There's ways to give relief from kids. But I'll talk to them about making it a mask break instead of lavatory duty, you know? You could have mask duty so that any kid at any time could go to break.
Is the middle school still using the reflector things, the plastic?
No.
Nobody is?
No.
You know, I just bring this up because, you know, we're going, we have those tractors, no, no matter what we do, they're going to find fault. But this just seems to be one that should be a simple fix and that doesn't lead them to go on to other things and we have to, you know, hear all that. So I mean, I just think this is something that can be fixed quickly. And, and by all means, these kids deserve to have this break, so let's get it fixed.
All right. Any other questions for the mask and face covering policy? All right, and then new policy review, COVID policy CBD 19-9 quarantine policy.
Yes, and so that is the updated new quarantine policy that we provided you this evening in alignment with the quarantine learning model.
That's what you hear about, right?
Yeah.
And again, also subject to change, you know, come mid-winter, if we find that there's lots of kids in quarantine and we need to make a shift in our model, we can absolutely do that.
Okay. And if there's no questions, then I will adjourn policy.
Wow.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, well, other finance committees, we'll begin with the finance review for orders over $7,000 for 2021, 2022.
Can I lump everything into like one thing? I mean, I didn't separate what was over $7,000. I'm always on there, I just have a lot of questions about the whole.
Yes.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah.
All right, so let's start with pages six through eight, books on African-American and Latino history, one each. I just question, are those books going to the library?
So that is for the Black and Latino Studies course, which was legislatively mandated that we offer the new curriculum.
He's asking with the quantity.
Oh, the quantity.
One book of each of these things, I mean, what, how's that going to work? I thought perhaps it was going to the library and then there could be reference material.
They may be for planning purposes for the committee that's working on developing the curriculum. These are the recommended books from CIRC.
All right, we can just.
So obviously, if there's not more than one copy, it's not student materials, it's probably more teacher instructional materials.
To build a curriculum, right?
To build a curriculum, yeah. Or like you said, Jack, reference materials.
All right. My next question is on page 16. I just want to find it myself.
Is this the real expensive t-shirt?
Yeah. Creative sportswear t-shirt. It says quantity one and then it says $1,660.
Yeah, so that's, it was one order. Mr. D'Nazzo purchased shirts for all of his staff for the first day of school. East Haven yellow jacket shirts for pride and school spirit. So that's what that order was for.
All right, so, so in the quantity, it doesn't necessarily mean only one.
Correct.
Correct. One order.
The PO would have the quantity on it.
The PO would have the actual number of shirts ordered.
All right, thank you. Okay, page 18. My pages all mixed up. Anyway, there's fire protection testing.
Yep.
All right, so JMMs, okay, East Haven High School had three different tests and the middle school had one. And, and one of those was a duplicate of what the high school had. And the high, the, JMMs is paying $250. The high school's paying $2,165. So you're saying that those other two tests were $1,000 each?
The sprinkler inspection is pricey, yes, because they check every head in the building.
Okay.
That service is under, under review, right there.
All right, thank you. Can you tell me on page 26, what is Happy Numbers?
Happy Numbers is a learning tool that is designed for very young students. It is on our approved list of district technology resources.
Thank you. All right. The next one is page 38. And I don't know, maybe you have this somewhere, but you have Office Supplies Academy and there's a whole bunch of listed things. And then we have this Humphrey and Savino. I think we need to know a little bit more about what, what these things are. Is there a place I should be looking to see what it is that they're ordering? And that also goes to pages 41 and 42, which just says classroom supplies, classroom supplies. You know, I'm, I'm looking at these things and I see some, you know, we're ordering, let's just say 50 blue folders. At, or 150 blue folders. Now, I don't know if these classroom teachers are duplicating that, are they then ordering, you know?
So teachers, teachers receive a small amount that is directed by their principal every year to purchase items specifically needed for their classroom. These items include things like name tags for their students that are, you know, the visual preference that they have, a poster that they might need. So it's, 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 it's one PO for the items and that's shipped directly to the teacher.
So Jack, you know what? We're going to, because of these questions, I just told RJ, we'll start bringing up the basket of invoices so that before the meeting starts, it'll be here and you can go through the invoices and see what's on the PO.
Yeah, because I'm, you know, we're sitting here, now we're going to vote later on and we're going, I'm going to go aye and I don't really know what I'm voting on, voting on.
So generally, you know, we carry the basket of invoices, it's downstairs. You can bring that up and you can go look at that PO and see exactly what was on there.
That is an excellent answer.
But you really, I mean, you realize that basket's going to be a dis.
Well, I mean, I just want to look, yeah, I just want to, you know, like I said, you're at, I'm sitting here and I'm voting.
And actually.
I can go get it, I can go get it.
I don't want to see it today.
No, I can go get it between meetings.
But you know what? Actually, in the past, we've made that available on the Monday before the board meeting. So you can come to our office if you wanted more time to look through it.
Okay, I would prefer that and I'll, I'll start doing that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Or if you want to, Jack, just send me an email of items. And if you can't come in, I can, we can scan.
Okay.
Yeah. We've done that in the past for Mr. Hennessy and he's come in and looked through the basket of invoices. I think we actually met on it once too.
So invoices available Monday at, in central office.
After 12 o'clock in central office.
Okay.
Or the finance office, yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, of course.
Yeah, Jack, I don't think you've been with us during a regular start of the school year to see all the.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Purchases before.
So we've got, like this has happened, it does, yeah. It gets raised, somebody always raises it every year, so.
And you're going to see a lot of payments out to teachers to reimburse and stuff, you're good.
And the, the PO is, so if they make any, you know, like an Amazon order, what pulls here is the detail that's entered by the school, so the school knows when it's received, what, where, who goes to what? Like what piece of the order goes to what?
Because everything goes through your office.
Right, so once you see the PO, it'll be like a stack, it'll be a thick PO to Amazon, but you'll be able to see per teacher what they, what the order.
That's all I wanted, thank you.
Perfect.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions on those?
No, that was all I had.
The only other thing I had is what's the East Haven High School elevator repair? I didn't see anything in the packet about that.
Yeah, so that was the last minute, that came about, so we're going to, that's on the agenda, right?
Yes, so can we do, is that, so we have purchase orders and invoices. Any other questions on those two items? Sorry, I just want to bring us back to the agenda and make sure we're touching on any, everything.
Yeah, is there any other questions before we move on to that?
I don't have any.
No.
So, any question on the health insurance report?
I don't get it. Well, no, because like in August, you had the first week is $508,000, then went to 31, then went to 451. Do people get sick every other week?
So these bills are, that section that you see there is what Anthem bills us every month, or every week and pulls from our account based on the lag in claims. So based on whatever the claims submitted were, Anthem will provide us an invoice and pull that money from us every Monday. So that, those are our expenses. And so I've summarized it in that front summary sheet. The total income is, is made up of what we, what we receive from employee contributions and the monthly deposit from the Board of Ed, which is basically our withdrawal from, to the board-based medical account. So you'll see in July, there was an $833,000 deposit from the Board of Ed. That was for the, for both summer months, we did that together. Normally, the payment is 416 change consistently every month. So that consists of our income and the expenses is made up of what you're seeing in there for first week, second week, third, third week, fourth week. So that's automatically generated and billed directly through Anthem. And you'll see like in August, we receive the credit and re-rebate and that's normally for pharmacy rebates, but Anthem provides that to us every Monday.
Why is that tension in these?
I made a call about the air conditioning.
All right.
Is that it?
That's it.
I said for the first second.
No.
So.
The Alliance Grant.
Do you want to do the smaller things first, the Alliance Grant last, or you want to do them?
I can do the Alliance Grant. So every year, we bring the Alliance Grant to the Board of Education for approval. It's focused on the same four priorities that it has been in the past, so it's culture. So it's culture and climate, operations, academic, talent, which are in alignment with the board goals. The grant is structured so that you have to write SMART goals that are quantitative in measure, um, quantitative in, what's the word I'm looking for? Nature, thank you. Quantitative in nature, in alignment with our, what's called ESSA targets. Those are targets specifically set by the state of measures for chronic absenteeism, for English language arts growth, for math growth, for district performance index, that we aren't required to meet each year. So those are fixed. You can see that there's some narrative in there in a budget overview. Much of the Alliance Grant, much of the one point one million dollars of the Alliance Grant is spent on staffing and existing staffing that has been in place for a very long time. Questions on the Alliance Grant?
Just that it's very specific, and you just have to follow what you put in there, like you just explained. It's not like you can play with that money.
No, if you wanna move money from line to line, you have to put in for a budget transfer with a rationale, and then it has to be approved by the state. Once we submit this grant, it's fixed unless we request a revision. And the revision has to go through their process, and they have to approve the revision. We also do have quarterly meetings with the turnaround office where we have to discuss and defend our strategies and actions and review our data, very specifically with the State Department of Education team quarterly throughout the year.
Now, with the goals that you have set there from going from your baseline now to what they wanna achieve, do you have some sort of benchmark that you wanna do, you know, two percent per month or something like that? Or what happens if we fall short?
So these indicators that are in here are based off of one assessment given on one day in the spring. The Smarter Balance Assessment determines the ELA growth, the math growth, and the District Performance Index. So it, we don't give that assessment in between each one of those quarterly meetings. What we rely on are our district assessments, which are not the same exact assessment that these benchmarks are based off of. So we use our, our district level assessments, like our DIBELS and our I-ready assessments, to help gauge our progress towards those benchmarks. The DPI, District Performance Index, is really calculated off of twelve different indicators. Arts access, on track to graduation, chronic absenteeism, physical fitness scores, college and career readiness, Smarter Balance ELA growth, Smarter Balance EA, um, math growth. And so it's hard for us to create our own calculation like that in district because it's very nuanced with the state and their assessments that they use and how they calculate all that data and that index. We do the best we can on the ground with our regular assessments in helping us to track our progress over time. And that new system that Jennifer has up and running, Performance Matters, is gonna be a great tool for us to sort of monitor our growth. But we internally don't have any type of assessment and system for calculating the same way the state calculates that DPI for accountability purposes.
I don't think you could.
It's just not replicable.
Now, are you gonna give, with the new system being up, are you gonna be giving, you know, quarterly, um, basically statements or how everybody's doing as a whole, the district is doing?
Yeah, we talked about that at the last meeting. We're, actually, we're gonna have, we're gonna be having a workshop tonight, but we decided to reschedule to go over this, so we're gonna be setting a meeting for that tonight and how we're gonna assess the progress, especially with the new change that we made for this year, just to see, you know, basically how things are going. We're gonna get, I think, uh...
So on September twenty-eighth, what we'd like to do on September twenty-eighth is have the Six Twelve Team present to you SAT data, Smarter Balance data, and NGSS, which is science data, on September twenty-eighth. So we'll have our Six Twelve Instructional and Principal Team here presenting that data. Then in the first meeting in October, we'd like to present the K-5, Smarter Balanced ELA in math, and the science assessment data. Thereafter, we can certainly present the local level, our district assessment data results as we monitor over the course of the year.
We generally have assessment calendar windows that involve a beginning of the year cycle, a middle of the year cycle, and an end of the year cycle, and our teachers set goals to sort of move students forward on our localized assessments.
And now that you're using I-ready, it's gonna be much easier.
Instant. And that speaks to all the other assessments that they have, which are able to be, you know, reports can be easily run in Performance Matters to see how children are performing, not on that one thing, but on all aspects of their educational day. So if you have access to that kid in your class, you can see their social-emotional learning screener of information. You can see their grades. You can see what's, you know, what kinds of things are the student doing well, and what kinds of things are we looking to focus on to help support those students.
And don't forget, in two thousand eight, um, for the school year two thousand nineteen, twenty, we did not have assessment data because we didn't administer the SAT or the Smarter Balance or NGSS in the spring of two thousand twenty. So there is a gap year there as well.
And it's amazing. I mean, they don't even, the state doesn't want people to even compare districts and whatnot because everybody did something a little bit different, right?
They are not making this year's Summit of Assessment data publicly available. Generally, the ed site, website is available to see how districts performed publicly. They are not loading two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one data because, for that reason, because the different learning models and what they found about the data was such, was so anomalous that they didn't feel like it would be good to compare over time. It's just not a good measure to use comparatively over time or comparatively by district, as you said.
Good. I think that, um, that's important because it just goes to show you that, you know, COVID-19 hit hard in education.
We thought we would be able to use it as a new baseline, but Jen had an amazing conversation with someone from the Performance Office at the state, and what we thought, when they presented some of the data to us, they, they separated it by, you know, in-person learners versus hybrid learners versus remote learners. But the way that they categorized those results isn't the way we defined remote learners. So a remote learner to us was somebody who participated one hundred percent in remote learning for the entire year. An in-person learner was somebody who was in school the entire year, and we had one or the other. At any point during the year, you were an in-person learner or a remote learner. Jen, explain to them how they decided to categorize a kid who was a remote learner, a hybrid, or an in-person learner.
So the, the way that we're calculated at the states, if you look online at their public results, if it refers to an in-person learner in East Haven, it means that student was present in school seventy-five percent of the instructional days of the school year. If a student is hybrid, that means that student was present in person twenty-five to seventy-four percent of the days of the school year. And if the person is remote, it means that person did not attend in-person schooling any more than like twenty-four percent of the school year. So it doesn't matter if they were gone for the beginning half of the year and came back for the last half. It's just the total of their attendance as reported to the state. So we're interested in kids who maybe chose to start off remote and then ended up returning. Or we did have a number of families who went back and forth in models. We had a number of students who were quarantined by no fault of their own, but that impacted their, their attendance code that was used to indicate that they weren't here, but they were in a different model. So the data, even that data about how our kids did on Smarter Balanced, you know, when we look at kids that are coded as having attended in person for the most majority of the school year, we can't even control for kids that are chronically absent in, um, and it's a lot of math. That's very complicated. But to simplify, the, what the state has offered to us and what we're interested about knowing about our instructional program, you know, it's, it's limited in what, when comparing apples to apples, because it doesn't, like, when it says hybrid, there are districts who said they are in a hybrid model. We did not have a hybrid model. So we reached out to the state and say, how is it that we have hybrid kids? We don't have hybrid kids.
Right. We had kids reported as hybrid kids, and we're like, we didn't have a hybrid model. And that's when we learned how they categorized kids into those categories.
It was just the attendance wise, whether you were in school or not.
And the percentage of full days of the school year not necessarily like the model that they chose. So, um, if they, it could have been kids who were in-person kids who maybe had some, you know, back and forth remote and in attendance, also attendance issues, you know, so with its, we are building our own separate report because what we're interested in, you know, is, but what the state does definitively say is that students who have that in-person code across the board have performed better. That the, the hybrid and remote classes, the negative impact of just only being able to connect to the teachers with the live stream was, was not, you know, indicative of, of the same level of trajectory of growth that we saw in kids who are in person. So that's sort of what they're, the summary that they are going over. So it was complicated, like, we had to look at this because I want this data to help us make decisions. And so it was, it was something we had to reach out and get clarity on.
That's gonna be difficult to use it.
So we'll develop our own reports to help us.
Thank you, Jen.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions on the Alliance Grant? I know we got a little sidetracked there. But, uh, you know, I didn't wanna stop the momentum, so let's move on to asset disposal, shall we?
So we have three assets for disposal, two from the Academy, one from the JMMs. The Academy is the double-door coolers. Those were both replaced over the summer with new equipment. Same for JMMs with a single-door freezer. Those two are unreparable. There was parts broken, so we can't service them, so we're just asking them to be disposed of.
Do we get some kind of payback on that, like, you know, for scrap metal, or how does that work?
We call the company. The company comes and grabs it. We normally do not.
Otherwise, it sits?
Right now, they're on the loading dock, yeah.
Yeah. What is out there right now?
These, these three are on our loading dock now.
Might be a washy, but if you did, to pay for it to be hauled away.
Yeah, like, I'll, I'll look into it.
Yeah.
Unless our people brought it for scrap.
Right.
Our people could.
There's a place on the Boulevard I know, and there's, there's a couple of places. You just drive in, they weigh the truck. You unload, then they weigh, and they pay you for the...
But it would, I don't think it'd be worth paying someone to do it.
No, right, that's what I'm saying. In-house, it would be worth it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Otherwise, let's move on to the elevator repair.
Yeah, so as, as agendas were going out Friday, we had a call that our elevator in the high school was down, so I wanted to get on the agenda tonight because I knew it was gonna be a pricey project. They provided this later Friday afternoon. So one of our eleva, we have two in the high, high school, one on the east and west wing. One malfunctioned. They came out to assess and determine that. The elevator was twenty-three years old, and the motherboard had gone on that one elevator. So they were getting us a quote. We got the quote late Friday. And to replace the motherboard, we have to update the software for the elevator, the selector board inside the elevator, the power, the whole nine yards. So it's a fourteen thousand two hundred dollars to get that repaired. That's for one elevator. So before we go and do that repair, I just wanted to make the board aware of the price tag.
Yeah, but it has to be done to be able to...
It has to be done. As of right now, we only have one working elevator, so I wanna get the project done. But due to the price of the project, I'd like to just make you aware of it that we are doing it. I mean, we do have an option of trying to get quotes and go somewhere else, but we have a contract with Com who doesn't work. So to go out to bid, we'd almost be going out to bid for the whole contract, and that would add almost a month to, two months to get a new company, then get them to price this project where I think for our ADA requirements, we need to get that up and working as soon as possible.
And I wouldn't risk it. I know there's a lot of computer chip shortages and...
Correct. So when they gave this to us Friday, they said if we sign a PO, they can get the part in two to four days, and then schedule us accordingly. So I'm recommending we move forward, but because of the price tag, I wanted to just make you all aware of it.
Thank you.
Jen, do you have, the other elevator, is that normally serviced or anything like that, or when they...
It is serviced by the same company. That is functioning now, but they did let us know that once this software gets updated, the two may not, because it's off of one server. Two different softwares on that one computer, the elevators may not talk to each other well. So it may only be the matter of months before we do this for the second.
Okay.
Thanks for the warning.
Exactly how I thought.
Very good.
All right. I mean, twenty-three years, that's a pretty good run.
Yeah.
It's not bad.
Yeah, it is.
I can't, I can't believe it. The school's that old.
Yeah, right.
I got an old shovel in my garage from the groundbreaking.
I think it's because they're very tight with those keys every year in high school, aren't they? Very tight.
It was a big deal to go on the, on the elevator in school.
Well, it's no joke. Here.
Yeah. You needed a special key to get on the elevator.
Yeah, you gotta leave it, too. And even if you spread your ankle, you gotta go up those stairs on purpose.
That's right.
You sure did.
They were still...
You gotta be wheelchair bound to go on the elevator.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right.
Any other questions on the elevator repair? Okay, any other business that might rightfully come before this subcommittee? None? I'm meeting, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Meeting adjourned. We'll to order this evening's meeting. Let's begin with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty. Why am I missing eight? Hold on one second. Oh, I flipped it.
Birthday.
Okay, all right. Um, why don't we begin with roll call attendance?
Peter DeBong?
Here.
Jennifer Longo?
Here.
Lisa Durecia and Sasha? Tom Hennessy? Tom Murtagh?
Here.
Erica Santiago?
Here.
Jack Stasek?
Here.
And Michelle Lusha?
Here. And, um, any board members joining online? Nope? Okay, all right.
We have one person interviewing in the public.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. That brings me to Chair of the Board Report. All right, so for, for tonight, I, I gave this some thought, and I thought it'd be best to address in public. So I wanna address what seems to either be some confusion or maybe even miscommunication. Since I'm a optimist, I'm gonna go with that. Regarding board material distribution, it's come to my attention that certain individuals have been sharing a falsehood that I, as chairperson, have directed the administration to withhold board meeting materials from the board. However, I can assure you that I have no authority to do so, and anyone who states otherwise is gravely misinformed. Keep in mind that the board's only employee is the superintendent, and only, the, in the only direction that can be given to that one employee is by the action of the board as a whole through a consensus or public vote. Thus, it should be noted that any administrator or staff member that carries out an action at the direction of an individual board member that was not voted on and agreed upon by the majority of the board and communicated to them by the superintendent will be a misuse of their position in this district and be in violation of Policy nine zero three zero. Since I was elected chair, I've done whatever I can to not only be supportive of all members, but to reinforce the equality of power amongst the board. There is no tyrannical dictatorship in which the chairperson or any member directs staffs to do... There is no tyrannical dictatorship in which the chairperson or any member directs staffs to do anything. And if that was the case in the past, it's over. And as is the pressuring of board members to vote in any way. Politics have no place on the board and especially when it comes to making decisions that affect our school community. And as far as I'm concerned, voting party line is a thing of the past. I do take the questioning of my ethics. I do not take the the question of my ethics lightly for it is my professional reputation being questioned, being that ethics or at the foundation of both my career and my research. And I'm not gonna allow that for political games. So if anyone wants to share screenshots of emails or texts with Mr. Hennessy or any other board member that he has shared with me, I ask that you actually include the entire thread, being that I have nothing to hide, or I'll share it. And as a former colleague of ours once said, let's not play these reindeer games. So I'm gonna ask who here is under the impression that I have told anyone to withhold board materials from anyone? No.
Nope.
Have I ever asked anyone except when we talked about let's not try to make sure we don't put board materials for executive session on the drive? I believe that was the only conversation. But in any way, I I'm curious because I'm being told by people that apparently I've been doing this and that I've been directing staff members to do certain things. Fantasy. Because it was shared with me different text messages and emails that I sent to staff as well as administration in town with Mr. Hennessy that he conveyed to me over the weekend. And I would honestly again remind them to please share the entire thread or I will because I have absolutely everything I ever sent or received saved since 2013. So and I have no problem sharing that. Any takers? No? Okay, just curious. So that's it. We shall now move on to care respondents.
None. Melissa said no as well.
Okay. Perfect. Now we will go to subcommittee reports. Jack?
Yeah, athletics, everything is moving along well. The athletic director is pleased with the way the season is going. Coaches have everything under control as far as COVID and what the coaches' responsibilities are and such. I there's one thing I'd like to report that Luigi Amassino, I believe was a 96, 1996 graduate, was inducted into the New Haven Gridiron Football Hall of Fame this past week, past Thursday. So I think it's quite an honor. And there was quite a nice write-up about him and his career here at East Haven. I believe he's a police officer now. I'm not sure which town, but that's it on athletics.
Thank you. Personnel?
We do have some upcoming negotiations coming up. And I believe that's it.
And a personal contract on tonight's agenda.
There is a personal contract on for tonight for assistant teacher, I believe.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And hires and the usual, too many to name.
Policy?
There are some policies on tonight's agenda, several, and nothing for community outreach.
Okay. So that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Yes, I'm gonna ask RJ just to provide an update relative to the traffic that we spoke about at the last meeting. He's been spending some time at Tuttle School and we've made a couple of changes.
So after the middle school and academy that we spoke of at the last meeting, I went to Tuttle School. We've made some changes where kindergarten and first grade pick up and drop off. Starting this past Monday is now in the back of the building with the rest being in the front of the building. I believe there was approximately 75 cars in total. So moving K and one to the back of the building splits it almost evenly 35, 35. This afternoon's dismissal was done, start to finish in 14 minutes. Everybody was picked up and out of the building safely by four o'clock. So with dismissal at 3:45, I believe that's a that's a good improvement. And we're continuing to monitor if we can make any other minor tweaks to make it more efficient in inside the building as far as getting the students ready. But getting them out in on the buses in that amount of time, I believe, is very efficient.
Very good.
This, when was this? Past Friday, Tuttle School held their Celebrate America Day and it was really nice. Police department, fire department and fifth grade students came together to honor the heroes and the families from 9/11. And they did a really nice job celebrating and reading their statements. And it it felt really great to have everybody together again at a school, in a school setting, celebrating like that. So I'm hoping that we can do more of those types of things as the months progress. And then I also just wanted to read the State Board of Education letter that was sent to board members and superintendents today. It says, Dear Board of Education members and superintendents, as members of the Connecticut State Board of Education, we recognize the significant challenges currently facing our schools and school leaders. As such, we want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the critical work that you continue to do in support of our schools, faculty, families and students, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. We applaud you for all your efforts to keep our schools open and safe and our students learning. What we have learned during the past school year and what is supported by recent assessment data is that students learn best in person with their educators and friends. And in-person instruction is only made possible through the consistent employment of a series of mitigation efforts and protocols to support safe and healthy school environments. We understand how stressful these situations can be in the face of opposition and truly appreciate your courage and commitment to supporting your school staff, families and students. The only way we can get through this pandemic is to work together in support of our communities. We always invite everyone to the table to provide input and collaborate and we encourage you to continue this practice whenever possible. For the sake of our children and their continued success in learning, we join you in placing them at the center of all of our discords and efforts in support of the members of the State Board of Education. And that's all I have for the evening.
Assistant superintendent?
Hi. So at today's policy workshop, we reviewed the proposed model for quarantine learning.
At our board's policy workshop, we reviewed the proposed model for quarantine learning. It is our belief that continuation of learning of the core curriculum is vital for all of our students. And our focus in developing this model was to keep kids on track academically, connected socially and emotionally, and to support a seamless transition back into the school setting after the closure of the quarantine period. In all cases, we are committed to ensuring the educational program for students. And so we planned the model that we shared with an understanding that for many students, learning from home can present challenges. We respect the unique needs and desires of families. As such, our model will include a series of success at home live interactive sessions in all grade levels and coaching from certified educators to help keep students focused and on track with their work. Includes supplemental options and personalized support and access to print materials as needed based on the developmental need or as alternative to screen time. I do want to make sure that this is not to be confused with packets as this would not be an accurate representation of the model, although print materials would be shared in the form of a folder or some type of of gathering of material. But that is not limited to what students will be able to access, just to sort of dispel any confusion. Supplemental courseware and asynchronous video-based instruction may be made available to ensure access to rigorous material, including at the AP and early college levels. We are excited to make sure that we can offer ongoing learning. At this time, we do not have a large number of students in quarantine, but the the beauty of this model is that it allows for some flexibility and enhancement as trends and numbers continue and it will allow us to revise. So I this time, I'm happy to take any questions and Erica and I would be happy to review with you information discussed at this morning's or this earlier policy workshop.
So just to clarify, all students will have some contact with instructors throughout the day?
There is a full schedule of sessions, live sessions for students throughout the day in both K through A and six through 12.
And of course, we're flexible in case the numbers shoot up and a certain percentage of students end up being having to.
This this model will allow for increasing the number of sessions, increasing available, you know, slots for teachers who wish who have a large number of students in their classes in quarantine. They may be able to add additional sessions. Absolutely, yes. Other questions?
I think you've been very flexible in accommodating, at least putting this in a, you know, inviting, putting getting, it's a it's a solid plan, but it's also flexible and enough that if it needs to change it, well, we can. You know. We just don't know what's to come.
But I think we want to make sure that our kids won't lose any of their momentum of their learning.
Right.
Although quarantine, you know, can be difficult as students are experiencing symptoms. We just want to make sure kids have access to someone who can help them with their work, understand where to find what they need, so the success at home coaches can provide that personalized learning that's really designed for people in an at-home environment.
All right. So that moves us on to, why do I keep losing my copy? All right, meeting now. I'm looking right at it. Oh, my gosh. Please approve of meeting minutes from special meeting on September 8, 2021.
I make a motion to approve this special meeting minutes for September 8, 2021.
Second. Any questions, comments? If not, at this time, I'm going to ask for an I vote to approve the meeting minutes from September 8, 2021. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Abstained? Okay. Noted. Motion carries. Approval of consent agenda. Purchase of orders over 7,000 for 2021, 2022 as well as invoices for fiscal year 2021, 2022 in the amount of 152,800 $48.70. And is that it? All right, usually there is.
After having all of my questions successfully answered and all my concerns answered, I make a motion to tip purchase orders over 7,000 and the invoices for the fiscal year 2021, 22 in the amount of 152,848.70.
I second it.
Any questions or comments? Okay. At this time, we're gonna do an I vote. All in favor to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So that brings us to audience of citizens. Melissa, do we have anyone here that would like to speak this evening?
Yeah, we have one virtual.
Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, then let's go to our our virtual friend. I'm sorry, that's a term they use in class, virtual friends.
I like it. We call them our at-home friends last year.
Their side is connecting. Can you hear me? Getting some feedback. There's still trying to connect. They're connecting. Says connecting audio. They can't hear me. It's gonna work, it's gonna work. Just keep saying that it's connecting.
Can we move on if they connect?
Yeah, why don't why don't we do that?
Okay, if they connect, I'll you know.
Yeah, let us know. Okay, so we're gonna move on to 7.1. Discussion and possible action on the approval of COVID policy CBD 19.1, temporary policies and regulations related to COVID-19 as discussed on the September 8th subcommittee meeting that we had. Was that a subcommittee or a workshop? It was a subcommittee.
It's a subcommittee before a special meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So 7.1.
Yep.
So make a motion to discuss and, you know, act upon, approve, I guess, COVID policy CBD-19.1.
Oh, she's connecting.
Oh.
Sorry.
Can we just finish this one or no?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
And the temporary policies and regulations related.
I'm muted.
Yeah.
Okay, give me one second. I'm putting you on now. Okay, if you could just state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Lorena Venegas and my address is 73 George Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I just want to take a brief moment to let you know that I'm concerned about communication in the district and I want to make sure that we strengthen it as we start this new year. Particularly, I want to hone in on the subject of bullying in school. As my children are now going into the middle school setting, I want to make sure that we publicly acknowledge it, that it does happen at all levels and that we need to make sure that we bring in programming that helps people cope with it. Because I truly believe that bullying starts at home. And then it becomes a problem in the classroom and it is a disruption for our teachers who are trying to focus on their plans and everything else that they're juggling, considering all these COVID policies and such. So in January of this year, I remember giving public comment about bullying, especially as part of this board. And I want to make sure that we initiate and use the words because we need to talk about it more. We need to have dialogues that we can deal with it, so that we can give our children, our staff mechanisms to cope with it. And I think that's gonna make our town better. Sometimes we'll use, I I know a lot of people work on projects for kindness and and that happens at all grade levels and I and everyone's doing a great job and all that. But I want to make sure that we truly have dedicated programs besides the social emotional learning that have to do with bullying. And then just my other minute concern is on intramural sports. I want to see if we can use any of the American Rescue Act money so that we can offer some wintertime season sports for children who didn't make a varsity team but are still interested in playing sports for other qualities like leadership, teamwork, perseverance. teamwork, perseverance. There's other things that we can use sports for besides points and being competitive. So I want to encourage the district to think outside the box, work with the rec department so that we can make our facilities available to our children after hours for intramural sports. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. So let's pick up where we were, 7.1.
Okay. So again, I'll just repeat my motion to approve the COVID policy CBD dash 19 point 1 and the temporary policies and regulations related to COVID-19.
Any questions or comments? If not, at this time, I will ask for an I vote to approve COVID policy CBD 19 dash 1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action, 7, 7.2. Discussion and possible action on the approval of COVID policy CBD 19.2. Health and safety protocols related to COVID-19 pandemic. As was discussed earlier this evening as well as on September 8th. At this time, if no one has any clarifying questions, I will ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve 7.2 COVID policy CBD 19.2 health and safety protocols related to COVID-19 pandemic.
Second.
Any questions or comments? At this time, I'm going to ask for an I vote. All in favor to approve 19.2, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. 7.3. Discussion and possible action on the approval of COVID policy CBD 19.3 mask and face coverings.
I make a motion that we approve the COVID policy CBD dash 19.3 mask and face cover.
Second.
So at this time, are there any questions or comments?
Comment? Just want to make sure that we emphasize the fact that we're monitoring face covering breaks or mask breaks in this policy.
And I'll just add that we had talked earlier that they're going to look at different options for the kids' mask breaks.
Great.
Relative to the.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then I am going to go ahead and ask for an I vote. All in favor to approve policy CBD 19.3 mask and face covering, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. 7.4. Discussion and possible action on the approval of COVID policy CBD 19.6 emergencies and disaster preparedness. If there's no clarification questions, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 7.4, which is COVID policy CBD 19.6 emergencies and disaster preparedness.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If not, then I will ask for an I vote on this time. All in favor to approve COVID policy CBD 19.6 emergencies and disaster preparedness, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries, all in favor. Which brings me to 7.5. Discussion and possible action on the approval of COVID policy CBD 19.7. Electronic board meeting participation. Any clarification questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion at this time.
Make a motion to accept 19.7 CBD electronic board meeting participation.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Now, this time, I will ask for an I vote to approve COVID policy CBD 19.7 electronic board meeting participation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, all in favor. Let's move on to 7.6. Discussion and possible action on the approval of COVID policy CBD dash 19.8 vaccination. If there's no clarification questions, at this time, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve 7.6, which is COVID policy CBD 19.8 vaccination.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, so then at this time, I will ask for I vote. All in favor to approve, for the approval of COVID policy CBD 19.8 vaccinations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. 7.7. Discussion and possible action on approval of the 2021, 2022 Alliance Grant Application. Right, for the application, correct?
Yes, for 2021, 2022.
Yep. Any question, clarification questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion at this time.
Make a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 Alliance Grant. I'll second.
Questions, comments? If not, I will ask for an I vote for the approval of 2021, 2022 Alliance Grant Application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. See, 7.8. Discussion and possible action on the approval of the lead teacher contract. Motion?
Motion to make and approve the lead teacher contract that's uploaded in Drive.
Is it Hernandez?
Um, yes.
Yeah.
Somebody has to second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
So questions or comments?
Question and comment. All right, I brought this up at the last contract we discussed and this paragraph 12, I guess. I guess it's called paragraph 12 of the inclement weather. I tried to get some further information regarding as to why this section is in here, which states that if school is closed due to emergency weather conditions, it's expected that Ms. Hernandez shall report to work. I don't understand why we're making these people come to work in a school that is closed when they can do that work remotely from home and, or they're coming here and doing nothing. So I, I don't understand why this is in here. Again, I tried to get clarification from an individual who I was told was responsible for this and I did not get a response, so I questioned that.
I thought we, I thought you answered. I'm not sure.
We make use of that time because the Overbrook Early Learning Center is open 12 months, the entire school year. On those days, we do some cleaning, extensive sanitizing of the toys and the things that the kids are playing with. Sometimes we also have teachers work on writing curriculum or if we're in the middle of a NIAC accreditation or a review, we'll work on the portfolio during that time. Uploading documents, taking pictures, narrating the artifacts and things of that nature. It's generally time our staff is working together and/or achieving some of the things that sometimes are difficult to do when kids are in the building.
What's our liability should someone get seriously injured in a motor vehicle accident due to the inclement weather? Because we're forcing them to come to work on a day when school is closed. Teachers are not asked to come to school.
Well, we can't force them. They can take a personal day.
I know.
And if there's in a, what do you call it, the governor.
Right, I understand that. I understand, I understand all that.
The teachers make up the day at the end of the school year. These are 12-month employees, so there's not time, the rationale behind it originally when it was suggested is there's no time for these individuals to make up those days, whereas for teachers, the day is added on to the.
But that doesn't answer what's our liability.
I don't think there is one. I mean.
There is one.
I don't know.
I'm the same as any other.
Any other.
They go in when it's snow days. If you, if you go to a grocery store, it'll be open.
I don't have snow days at my job. You know what I mean? The hospital employees don't have snow days. They go in during disaster, snowstorm and there's.
There was a time, a long time ago, but the issue also is that, that, oh, they would make sure if, obviously, if there were, you couldn't
Yes.
get there, or if there was such a condition, then they at least have that option to go to work or take a personal day, correct? Or they.
Correct. And, and there are 12 other 12-month employees outside of these individuals that are required.
Yeah, I understand. I think it should be removed from all of them.
Are required to, it's, um, part of it is some of the negotiated contracts.
It is expected that Ms. Hernandez shall report to work.
This is all legal because it's, it's negotiated in the contracts.
I, I disapprove of it, but if it, if it's a legal question, I'm not a lawyer, I just don't think it should be in there, but that's all. My, my comment.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Then at this time, I will ask for an I vote on the approval of Ms. Hernandez to be appointed.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion.
Yeah, it was moved.
I did.
So at this time, I'll ask for an I vote to approve the appointment of Mrs. Hernandez or Ms. Hernandez to lead teacher at Overbrook Early Learning Center. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. At this, um, 7.9, we have discussion and possible action on the approval of the asset disposal.
Make a motion to approve the asset disposal as discussed in Subcommittee. Second.
Um, questions or comments?
Comment? I'm sorry. No, I, I just would like to make a comment that it was stated earlier that we would investigate some kind of a scrap metal refund on this type of thing. But I totally approve of the asset disposal.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, I'm going to go in and ask for an I vote. All in favor to approve the asset disposal list? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. Brings us to 7.10. Discussion and possible action on the approval of hires, rehires, and stipends. So, yeah. Any clarification? Otherwise, I will ask for a motion at this time.
Make a motion to. Make a motion to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends.
I'll second. Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, I will ask for an I vote. All in favor to approve the list of hires, rehires, and stipends as presented to you this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. 7.11. Discussion and possible action on the approval of the East Haven High School Elevator Repair as discussed in Subcommittee to be in compliance for the ADA. I will ask if anyone has any clarifying questions. Otherwise, a motion.
Make a motion to approve of the East Haven High School Elevator Repair.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? If not, I will ask for an I vote for the approval of the elevator repair at East Haven High School. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. All right, at this time, before we pack up, I'm just going to ask to add an item and this is only due to we seem to have short supply of board members at meetings lately and I know Tom and Jen, your positions in healthcare and even you, Erica, I mean, I don't know if we're ever, if we're ever going to come to this, but in case we don't have a quorum, I want to make sure that even though she could, the superintendent can't exercise her executive powers, but I just want to make certain that everyone here is in approval of if need be, the superintendent can authorize hires, rehires, stipends, invoices to be paid, POs, in the event we do not have a quorum in a future meeting. I want to see, I mean, how everyone feels about that.
Is it going to be noted in that, like, in the event that the meeting is to be canceled?
Uh, technically, we don't have to, but I figured some people would be more comfortable if we did vote on it. Technically, she has the ability to do so if need be.
So just clarification. Question, just to clarify, if there's, like, if we show up and there's not a quorum and we can't hold a meeting, that then we could still pay the invoices?
Yes.
And execute whatever was on the agenda for which we couldn't meet because there was no quorum?
Well, not everything, just everything that would need immediate.
Assist, attention, which is mostly hires, rehires, and invoices.
Yes.
But I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly.
Yes.
Okay.
So, but we would, that wouldn't happen until we come to the meeting and realize that we don't.
Right, yes, exactly. That's my, that's why I'm, that's why I asked for clarification.
Um, and it's just, seems to be a problem, yeah.
Yeah.
After the November election, when is the new board take second, January?
No, December. December, after they're sworn in.
So we're looking at a really hot cover in November. October, November is critical with what we were discussing, right?
Yeah, but I wouldn't want not having a quorum to, you know, halt the board from operating, so.
Or the need then to try to figure out who can make another special meeting between to be, in addition to that meeting to approve.
I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah. Is everybody in agreement? I don't know if we need to make, put it as an agenda item or just be in agreement. I mean, again, technically she has that authority, but I want to make sure everybody is comfortable.
I'm comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with it.
Very.
And just to make sure everybody knows that that is going to have to happen because we really need to make sure our bills are paid and we get, you know, teachers and staff started when they need to start and not have it held hostage.
Yeah, we're down two, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
All right.
And, and it's nice that I know that when you can't be here in person, you guys do try to lock on and make them do that and, because it, we appreciate that.
Yes, how many nights did we see Jen in her car?
It is, yes.
Yeah, that helps when people are.
But you're in the works for it. We are right here in the middle of all of this.
We're from her office, I should think of that.
And it just.
Okay, all right, so then we, I just wanted, like I said, I wanted to make sure everybody was comfortable with that and make sure everybody was aware.
Okay.
So is that an add-on?
No, we're not going to add. I just, again, because you have that right, but I didn't know, some members might have felt that it needed to be voted with the, with the parameters around it, but we're all comfortable.
Can I add 7.12 CBD 19.9, the policy on quarantine guidelines? I, it's not on this agenda.
Yes.
But it was discussed at the previous Subcommittee and it was discussed previously in the Subcommittee, yeah.
So I make a motion to add.
7.2.
What?
7.12.
7.12 to the agenda.
CBD 19.9.
Quarantine.
Quarantine policy.
So somebody seconds that and then we make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, now you can make a motion, right?
Yep, no, first we need to say yes. Okay.
Oh.
Right, so the, the motion is to add 7.12 quarantine policy CBD 19.9. I'll ask for an I vote to add agenda item 7.12 quarantine policy CBD 19.9. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Motion carries. So that brings us to 7.12. Discussion and possible action on the approval of COVID policy CBD 19.9 quarantine policy. And thankfully Jen and Erica added to this today, right? We, we worked on it.
Yeah, so the policy is now in alignment with what we presented relative to the learning for quarantine, for students in quarantine.
So I'll make the motion to approve policy CBD 19.9 quarantine policy. I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Okay. If not, I will ask for an I vote on the approval of COVID policy 19.9 quarantine policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I was going to set up a sentence, no, I'll send it back. All in favor, motion carries. And that would be the conclusion of this evening if, unless anyone wanted, has anything specific for our next meeting. Otherwise, as you know, you could always email myself or Erica, both of us, whoever.
So are we adding the?
We did propose at our earlier meeting the 6 to 12 Smarter Balance and GSS and SAT presentation, so is the board inclined to do that on the 28th?
Mm-hmm. Everything in 6 o'clock?
I can.
Yeah.
I think that would work.
9:28, 9:28?
Yeah, 9:28, 6 o'clock, and then if there's any Subcommittee that needs to take place, we'll do it 5:30?
Well, okay.
I don't think, I don't think finance and building grounds will take that, take.
You don't have to do that before that. Some of us are going to be in negotiations.
If we're not going to have anyone here to do them, I, I have, I have to, I cannot get here until 6.
On the 28th?
Yeah.
For what? For, I'm sorry, negotiation? Well, I, I teach till.
Well, do you think, do you think 45 minutes will be okay for the smarter balance?
I think you have several grade levels and several content areas unless you'd like to split it up because our instructional leaders, you know, the smarter balanced assessment in the grades 6 through 8, the smarter balance, this SAT in grade, you know, the high school and, and GSS unless you'd be inclined to split them.
and NGSS, unless you'd be inclined to split them up.
Everybody need more than an hour?
If you're going to do 6 through 12, you need an hour.
Okay, yeah, an hour, so 6 to 7, right?
Yeah.
You want us to start at 5:45?
No, I think an hour is fine, I just, you know, it'd be 6.
So, so if we need five years... Unless you want to do it at 5:45, so that you have a little bit of reprieve.
Okay, let's do 5:45 then.
What do you do in Subcommittee?
Hmm?
What about Subcommittee?
Unless the Subcommittee chairs contact you to set up an agenda, then there's no Subcommittee.
Yeah. I, I think that's, that sounds great. I make a motion, can we adjourn?
Second. Meeting adjourned.